Were you ready for me, Mayor Albers?
Yep, I didn't miss anybody, right?
I am town manager Mike McLaurin, are you online? I'll check on him in a moment, I saw Karen.
Here.
Kevin James?
Yes, Karen's here.
Okay, Kevin may not be on yet. And then we have, or I'm not sure which staff will be on, but Abby's going to verify when I finish. So it's Jim Waterwitz, Carrie Warner, Adam McLamb, Todd Huntsinger, Brandy Dees, Hayden Kramer, Abby Ball, Alicia Massey, Tim Jones, and Kathy Queen.
Kathy, right now for this meeting, Todd Huntsinger, Stephen Lawford, Seth Carroll, Carrie Warner, Alicia Massey are the staff that are on right now, Hayden Kramer as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
We're all ready to start?
Ready.
Okay.
Mike McLaurin online?
Yes, I heard his voice.
I haven't heard him yet, Mr. McLaurin?
I heard somebody's voice.
Oh yeah, checking.
He's on mute right there.
Here. Yeah, thought I heard him. All right. There's no argument, we're gonna turn the workshop over to you, Mr. McLaurin.
Okay, Mr. Mayor and board members, welcome to our second virtual meeting in two weeks. This is our 5:30 work session and our topic will be the Park and Rec Master Plan. Hayden and the consultant have a number of slides, so we're gonna send it out to you outside of this meeting and then we will follow up with you to see if you have any additional questions or clarifications or points of information. And the plan is, as you know, we go through this at 5:30 and then two weeks later, we ask for approval of the plan. So without further ado, I will turn it over to Hayden and Hayden will introduce the consultant and they will get to the point and we're excited.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. McLaurin. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Again, thank you for the extended time this evening during the workshop session tonight. We are, I would say ecstatic to share with you the Park and Rec Master Plan. As you know, the project has been worked on over the past six months with updating the original plan from back in 2017. This has truly been an Indian Trail community project, input sessions, stakeholder meetings, surveys. So I wanted to provide a special thank you to everyone that participated, especially the Park and Rec staff. You know, we've been balancing everything else going on and tight deadlines and meetings and Zoom things and, you know, proofreading. So I just wanted to give a special shout out to them. It's been a pleasure during this process with you this evening, myself and two consultants from PROS. Nele Bott, who is the principal at PROS, and then Brayton McLaur, who is the senior project manager. Fortunate to have them both during the original master plan as well as this update. Again, as town manager McLaurin stated, as we present, please understand that there is additional materials available to us that will go greater in depth, but being respectful of everyone's time. We want to just provide that high level picture for everyone tonight. We will be available for, you know, additional questions via phone and/or email. Again, as Mr. McLaurin said, the intent is to come back in two weeks' time on the 23rd of February. You know, between this time and that time, answer any questions you may have and then adopt the master plan in its entirety. Again, with the understanding as we go through and move through the budget process, that some of these goals and big moves that we're going to discuss with you this evening will be prepared for. So without further ado, again, introduction of Nele Bott and Brayton, who will take the presentation and will chime in as needed. And Abby, do we, there we go. Perfect, Nele, are you on board here? There we go.
Perfect, all right. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for having us. As Hayden said, my name is Nele Bott and I am principal with PROS and happy to be a part of this continuation of the master plan. This is a quick highlight of the outcomes. As we looked at these, part of the thought was, you know, how do we engage the community? How do we utilize various data sources and update the ones we have? You are growing so fast as a community, so what do the levels of service look like? And then aligning with the National Recreation and Park Association's three pillars to ultimately create what we're going to show you is the big moves, the recommendations, the vision, mission values that will lead to this action plan. So before we go further into that though, I'm going to turn it over to Brayden to share more of the future demographics and trends projections and then I'll get into the community input.
Brayden, I think you are muted, Brayden.
Abby, do we have Brayden? No, we do.
I don't see him.
He's muted right now. There we go, he's unmuted.
Thank you.
And Nele, you have the ability to move through the presentation as well.
And Nele, you are muted as well.
All right, so I'm not hearing Brayden, I'm not sure if anyone else is.
Brayden, you're still on mute. Or we still can't hear you. Try without the headphones.
I'm gonna shoot him a text message or something.
Okay, he has called in, so maybe the phone number he's calling in, which is a 317 number, might need to be upgraded as well to a panelist. It might still be a webinar attendee.
Maybe if he went inside the building. I'll just.
Tell him to turn around.
Are you able to stand up, Nele?
Since he called in just a phone number, I can't upgrade him to a panelist, but I did allow him to speak as an attendee, so.
Yeah, now try unmuting yourself, Brayden, and speaking.
If not, Nele, I don't mind taking those just in the essence of time.
Yeah, I may go ahead otherwise.
About a few minutes, if you guys want to work it out, we have just a moment.
Okay, so imagine Brayden speaking, your total population growth is as fast as or as high as we can possibly see around the country, almost double the national growth rates. And even in the span of the last two years, where our initial projections were you would be at 52,000 in the next 15 years, you're now projected to be at over 55,000 as well.
Can you hear me now, Nele?
Perfect, go for it.
Sorry about that. Yeah, so as Nele mentioned, as you all are probably aware, your population has exploded in the last decade and is expected to continue to grow upwards of 55,000 residents in the next 15 years. Looking at the age segment distribution, Indian Trail is a rather young community. You have roughly 50% of all of your residents under the age of 35 years old and 80% of all residents under the age of 55 years old. Over the next 15 years, the population is expected to slowly age with the 50-plus population growing an additional 4% by 2035. In analyzing the town's racial distribution, Indian Trail is currently 77% white alone with its largest minority group being black alone, which makes up roughly 11% of the town's total population. Projecting ahead, the town is expected to continue diversifying over the next 15 years. Now we're going to look at some income characteristics. When looking at per capita income, the town falls right in line with those state and national averages. However, if we look at the Indian Trail's median household income, you can see we are significantly above both state and national averages with roughly $84,000 annually. Next, we're going to look, take a quick look at some local recreational trends. For this part of the analysis, we utilize a platform called EVRI, which stands for Environmental Systems Research Institute. EVRI is one of the largest organizations who specialize in market trends. By utilizing a metric called Market Potential Index, or MPI, EVRI can project the likelihood that a resident living within Indian Trail will participate in specific recreational activity compared to the national average. So looking at the general sports MPI chart you see on your screen, you can see every single activity scores well above 100, meaning their participation rate is well above the national average. With volleyball, baseball, and soccer leading all sport activities. Next, we're going to look at some fitness trends. Similarly, every fitness activity also scored well above the national average with jogging and running, weightlifting, and swimming being the top three most participated in activities. Next, we'll look at some outdoor activity trends. Again, almost every activity scored well above 100 in this category as well, with just horseback riding and canoeing slash kayaking scoring just slightly below the national average. Now I'm gonna turn it back over to Nele to talk about the website and some community engagement findings.
Thank you, Brayden. So really, you know, our philosophy even pre-pandemic and especially even more so as we were doing all the input within and during the pandemic is looking at just how do we go where people already are? And if we can't do it in person, let's pivot to doing it virtually. So that's where, you know, you've got a top-notch, you know, marketing and communications team, your branding is outstanding. So envision itparks.com. We had re-engaged the website, looked at online survey as well, as well as a whole number of virtual stakeholder and key leader interviews, including many of you, as well as virtual public meetings. And all in all, we had, just in the community input summary, over 800 people, 825 people participated in giving us public input in the last two to three months. From athletic groups to schools to, you know, city and county staff, to just, you know, participants in the community, it was a really broad cross-section, both in the virtual meetings and then in the online survey, we had over 750 participants. Just to give you context, when we done the online survey last time, we had about 350 odd participants, right? So this is a significantly higher engagement from your community in order to give their input as well. So, you know, obviously, number of you are here as a part of these, these are just some examples as well. And some key summary points, these are from the stakeholder interviews and focus groups, so it's very subjective based on the input we got. But when we asked about things that they like about Indian Trail parks and recreation, the top thing they mentioned is the variety of affordable programmings that pretty much have something for everybody. It has a very strong and recognizable brand, as I spoke to earlier. You know, I've always looked at you as punching above your weight when it comes to innovation and you've done so many cool things, especially in the pandemic, by pivoting to virtual programs as well as drive-up events, that's been wonderful. The community has consistently attended your events, they appreciate that very much. They've said that the staff is dedicated and friendly, they have found them to be very responsive, to be great partners as well. They all told me that Hayden promised to give them pizza if they say all these nice things, so that's why they said it. Kidding, but every single meeting was very complimentary of just, especially in the pandemic, how well the staff was responsive and how well they partnered with everybody, the library, the school, all of them mentioned that as well. That the town and the department were great partners as we go, you know, went through this. So we also asked about top priority, right? With improvements with one particular thing, we said, if there's one main outcome you'd like from this plan, what would that be? And they said, you know, and this is not in any specific order of priority, but just, we'd love new parks, playgrounds, amenities, especially in parts of town that are fast-growing and currently underserved. Connectivity came up a lot, you know, walking, biking trails, sidewalks, bike lanes, all of those components came up a lot. You know, a number of people said that right now, the only place they go for indoor recreation with the town is the building you see on the screen behind Brayden and myself. And that's, again, it's not meant to be a recreation center, it's just staff converting that to recreation space. They would love dedicated year-round indoor multipurpose, multi-generational recreation spaces. And while they love the special events you have, they'd love to continue having even more of those going forward. So, you know, then moving from this input, we also looked at what we had heard in the survey before, which is the statistically valid survey, and then the online survey right now. The statistically valid survey is key because it's the only one that is representative of your entire community's users and non-users. But keeping in mind that, of course, this is where, you know, we had 350 surveys and we got 426. Online survey had over 750 responses, which is, as I said, more than double. And some key findings, right? Everybody loves Crooked Creek, that's the most visited space that you have, followed by Chestnut Square. Program participation has increased a lot, it was 16% two years ago by the statistically valid survey. Now we've got almost 49%, even though that was online, very heavy participation. Great quality in general, the majority of them have said that it's excellent or good. Very few people have said that the quality is fair. The reason they do come is location, 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 right? That was the number one then, that's the number one now. Fees are what they mention as well as the quality for what they're doing currently. The flip side of that is, and this is, this is an interesting thing, the number one barrier is lack of awareness. And the conundrum is, you are actually very good when it comes to telling your story and marketing, but you have so many new people coming to town that you, it's almost like Groundhog Day, you have to keep telling your story over and over again. Right, for all of them to know who you are and what you provide. Word of mouth was the number one piece, you have done so much in social media and online. And you can see in the 2020 survey, social media, emails, and the website were by far the top three most used mechanisms for marketing. And in general, they are very, very supportive of new developing undeveloped land for recreation purposes. You know, in both cases, you can see a significant majority is very or somewhat supportive. And I think this number has grown even more after the pandemic. So all of that really led to these two key slides, right? They look at priority investments to say, what's the combination of the highest importance and the highest unmet need? Trails, greenways, indoor aquatics, and weights and fitness. So basically, year-round recreation were the top four highest priorities, very closely followed by a splash pad slash water park and then a fishing pond and neighborhood parks. Those are more of the medium priorities. What's in the red are the high priorities as of two years ago. And similarly for programs, by far, the top one was adult fitness and wellness, followed by senior and adult programs and water fitness. So you can see a lot of them, if you think of programs, driving facility design, it really is year-round recreation, aquatic components, and walking, biking, jogging elements that at the top of your community's priorities. So, you know, this is just an example, I'm not looking for you to sort of go through every line here, but this is how we have captured all the inventory with an Indian Trail, the county, what's provided by the schools and other providers. So ultimately, what this shows you is what's the current level of service based on today's population? Based on the recommended standards, if you build nothing, here's how many acres or trails or erect space you need. And then going forward, how many more will you need? So if you see the clusters of what's red, you see that on the very top, which are mini parks, neighborhood, and community parks, basically more parkland. You see them in the two in the middle, which are trails, paved and unpaved. And then you see them consistently at the bottom, which is indoor recreation space. Going forward down the line, you might need an outdoor pool or a dog park, maybe a single basketball court. But really, the three main themes are, you know, community, neighbor, or mini parks, more trails, and indoor recreation and gym space.
Absolutely, you know, and these maps were deliberately shown or deliberately chosen. This kind of provides a pictograph, obviously that other document was very small, it was very, you know, number intense. So this doc, these following equity maps kind of put a picture to that. So obviously, we know what Indian Trail looks like, so intentionally, there are more that are available, but just kind of want to speak to these overarching themes and trends through the rapport.
Thank you, Hayden. This allows you to better plan in terms of equity of distribution where there are gaps or overlaps. So you can see where you have your district and your regional parks, your community parks, where you have sports fields, where you can see significant overlaps in certain areas, or similarly for rectangular fields as well. But then you can also see where you are over serving playgrounds and yet there are gaps in some other places too. Similarly, for outdoor pools, indoor aquatics, or gym and recreation center spaces, as well as trails and walkways, right? So this really allows you to not just look at what do we not have currently, but then also take that to see where do we have gaps that we need to fill by either land acquisition or converting undeveloped land into developed park and recreational amenities. This gets us to the ultimate vision, mission, and the values, right? This is what was developed a couple of years ago. I strongly do believe that you are a trend-setting agency that absolutely transforms people's lives and staff has been and continues to be dedicated to enriching the community, not just through offerings, but truly memorable experiences. So, you know, the core values that they looked at were a sense of community. You know, parks and recreation even more during the pandemic has helped bring people together, as inclusive as you possibly can be in all your customer experiences for the internal staff and the external community, focusing on physical, mental, and emotional well-being as health and wellness. You continue to innovate and ultimately, you know, it's fun. What you do, people enjoy being a part of it, they choose to recreate with you. And so these are the core values that are guiding the big move as well as the goals that staff are going to establish for the plan. But these are some of the key goals from the plan that was developed and now updated, which is continue expanding offerings as your community grows and look at new and innovative offerings. Identify and reduce the barriers to participation, just like you saw a lack of awareness. So how do we offer new things, attract participants to it by increasing their awareness of the opportunities? And if you do that, it's going to result in a more financially sustainable plan, better and higher revenue generation through all of these options. And along with it, how do we engage the community? And how do we create and encourage more active engagement? One of the key goals is going to be the gaps that I showed you, looking at pursuing and closing the gap for the identified needs for park spaces, for trails, for indoor recreation, and then distributing them in ways that are equitable and allow access to parks and recreation, not just to parts of Indian Trail, but to the entire town. And ultimately, you know, celebrate the diversity, the growing community that you have, embrace equity and, you know, create sort of a welcoming environment for everybody. So the last and the biggest piece here, and this is really the legacy portion that all of you as leaders of the town and a fast-growing town think about, is if in five or 10 years, these are the big picture items you should be thinking about. You know you're going to need more land and greater offerings, so how do you equitably prioritize both the acquisition of land or where you have it, development of more parkland as you grow? Regional and local, both, how do you continue planning for and expanding trail connectivity? People love to walk, people love to not have to get into a car to go places, how do you provide for that? We're always hesitant, you know, as we put our business planning hats on, we're always hesitant to say, go and build a multimillion-dollar facility. What we typically recommend first is do a feasibility study and a business plan to identify what could it look like, where can it be, who can you partner with? And if you design a facility like that, that is truly multipurpose and multi-generational, what are the operational requirements from a staffing standpoint, from a maintenance standpoint? So that you're not just planning to build the facility, you're also business planning to ensure that five years down the line, you have the right staffing and the dollars that the facility generates revenue and allows for, you know, a growing department that can keep up with the growing offerings. You know, in the near and long term, you've got to continue investing in telling your story as, you know, both the current community grows and you have more people from outside that want and choose Indian Trail as their home. And along with all the new things that you do, a key sentiment also is take care of what you have. We don't want to be having you, you know, looking at recommending building a whole bunch of new things at the expense of taking care of what you have, right? So it's the balance between prioritize maintenance, prioritize land acquisition and new development equitably, connect the system, look at a feasibility study and a business plan for a new rec center. And as you do all of these, keep telling your story so that you continue to be the best place for people to live, work, and play. With that, we will turn it over to your questions and thank you for the time.
McLaurin?
Yes, sir, let's see if, I thought the presentation was very good, it was a steady pace. This is an important part of town government and as you start your budget process, one of the things we want to consider as we look at priorities for the town is how does park and rec play into the bigger picture? And then we nail down as to what parts of the apple do we want to bite first? So, Mr. Mayor, why don't we turn it over to you and see if any board members have any questions?
Mr. Cohen, do you have any questions? David, you're on mute? I'm coming back around to David. Marcus, do you have any questions?
Not this time, but thank you for the presentation.
I was, I was.
Oh, David, you're back, okay.
Yeah, I was talking away and I didn't realize you didn't hear me, sorry. First question is, is, and this really doesn't have to do too much with the presentation, but as far as our bond money, do we have a certain amount of time to spend that? Are we about, are we about done, time limit on that is running out?
As I recall, Commissioner Cohen, is that you have to have it spent by November? We've given you some figures on that. I want to say 1.2 million may be left, but don't hold me to that. And you are limited to only being able to spend it in two parks.
That's what I thought, okay, I thought, so, so we're not talking about that at all then, are we? I mean, we're not.
Where you, where you could leverage the bond money is if there are some things in this plan that may fit in one of the two parks, we could use money for that, but we could not use the money, bond money to go out and build, you know, land, you know, buy land or build buildings outside those two parks.
Correct, okay, I just wanted to make sure that, that, so it looks as if there's a possibility we won't use that money, is that correct?
I don't know that I would go that far, it's going to depend on the board, because passing bonds are, is certainly not a simple process. If there are some strategic investments that you can do in those parks, I would recommend you use that bond money, but don't just spend it because you've got it. I would add a comment that should you go out or when you go out in the future for park and rec money, that you probably want to have the language a little bit more. That you probably want to have the language a little bit more broad to give you a little bit more flexibility as things change.
I got you, okay, all right.
Todd, did you have any questions?
Oh, yeah, thanks for the presentation. I guess the parks or Mr. McLauren can answer this. But will staff present some possible strategic ideas of ways that maybe we could use this money in those two parks?
Yes, sir, I think that will come about in in two areas. Of course, later tonight, I'll talk about the two meetings we have it with COG. And as you might recall, on March 8th, when we have our second meeting. Part of that is staff will be talking to the board about what they see. They will be requesting in the upcoming budget. And as part of that, we will identify those items where we feel like could be best used for bond money and also trying to tie it back into your park and rec master plan.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Mr. Head?
I don't have any further questions.
Mr. Morris?
Yeah, I have a question. As far as approving the master park plan, that's supposed to happen in the next few weeks, is that correct?
Correct.
And we're to approve the plan without really realizing how we're going to spend the monies or how much monies that we have to spend with the existing bond? Because we're going to decide that in March or in the budget season?
Correct, so a- as I understand, you know, the the master plan shows you and kind of gives you that recipe towards where those dollars are being spent. So instead of just blindly throwing a dart at the board and saying, man, I hope people want a basketball court. You know, you can be intentional about that, look at the common overarching themes. You know, through the, you know, through the stakeholder meetings, through the survey, through, you know, through the trends. And then look at the dollars that may be able to suffice some of those needs in the community.
Okay, I just am a little confused that maybe we that we're doing the park plan separate from the budget. But maybe I'm missing the missing something here, but that's really the only thing I had.
All right, let me, Commissioner Marsh, let me add a couple of comments might be helpful. The the park and rec master plan is designed to be, say, a five year vision of where where we feel like parks and rec needs to go. And there may be some years where you make a lot of progress on that, there may be some years where you make a little bit of progress. But at least and touch on what Hayden said, when we get to the budget process. Instead of us just trying to throw bond money hither skither. We want to be able to tie it back into some sort of document which has data backing up what those needs are. And again, again, I would stress that we would not just spend the bond money just because we've got it. So that's, hopefully that's helpful to you, sir.
Yes, thank you, good explanation, thank you, that's it.
Okay, I have no questions. Thank you Hayden. And presenter?
Mayor?
Yes.
It's Mike Head. I was just sitting here thinking and didn't, wasn't there some discussion? Maybe over a year ago, Hayden, you may remember this of and so I'm really asking. I think one of the things that we were talking about was a fishing pond. Over in Crooked Creek, is this still part of the 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 vision going forward?
So I I think that when when we were looking at developing, you know, essentially phase two of Crooked Creek Park. There was a schematic either presented or floated that had some field space a- as well as a fishing pond. There have been some some wetland studies that have come back that that show that that entire area is a wetland area. So that there would need to be mitigation that that comes with that. So while a while the fishing pond has come up in the master plan, again, a master plan is not going to come out with a schematic and a blueprint to say here's the land, here's what you know, here's what we're doing. That's, you know, the the master plan gives you the the ideas, the data to to make those driving decisions. So, you know, essentially, we can put things out at Crooked Creek Park or out at Chestnut or or acquire land and develop that. You know, we just want that, you know, to to be rooted in the master plan. Are we actively pursuing a fishing pond and and you know, looking at contracts and developers? No, that is not something we're actively looking at currently. But again, come the budget discussion. That is something that we can explore just as, you know, additional ballfields or additional parks or courts and things of that nature.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have, this is David.
Go ahead, David.
Hayden, before I left council, I was told by the previous town manager that we were already in the in the phase of building those ponds, I don't know if Mike heard that same same thing or not, that I I thought we had already started working on the pond because you know, at one of the surveys, that was one of the main things that 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 people wanted. So, you know. I just thought we were doing it and then of course, I I left council and then come back and then now to find out that we never even even can really, didn't seem like we even considered it, although I thought we were already already getting building one or already getting ready to build one. So I really don't know what happened to that to that. And I don't know if anybody else was told, was anybody else told we were building a pond there? Was it just me that was told that we were we were already in the process of building a pond? But that that doesn't necessarily have to be done. But I'm just going to give you my two cents worth real quick. You know, we, I hear that there's possibility we're thinking about building a building or building, you know, we have lots of and and one one thing in the presentation, which I thought was a good presentation, but the presentation said we were kind of on the younger side in Indian Trail, although most of us are not. And then one of the things I saw was senior things for seniors for for weightlifting and that type thing, and I don't know how many indoor weightlifting and and places that we have in town, but you also have you know, for for minimal amount of money, you you have great facilities in Indian Trail that you could spend. At least they say, I guess I should be more apt to go into one of these places, $10 a month, $15 a month. And you you can go work out, a lot of them are busy and a lot of them aren't busy and a lot of them go out the business, but there's there's a lot of different things. I I know that if we build build a building, a big indoor building, that that's very expensive. And I think we all, you know, we all take a look and see what we already have in town, that we have businesses here in town. That that, you know, that rely on the public to come down and and use their facilities. So anyway, that's just my two cents worth and and I I would like to, if council's interested in in doing this. I always liked the idea of a pond, I always liked the idea of picnic tables. I always liked the idea of of having a place to go and, you know, to for people to go and relax and and I like that idea too, and I I really don't know what happened to it other than the fact that it it mentioned something about the wetlands and and you mentioned Hayden, what what is, i- is there something because of the wetlands that keeps us, that keeps the ponds pushed it out or what?
You know, and this is something that Town Engineer Todd Hunsinger can can speak to because the that department, you know, specifically you know, went through the wetland study. So part of part of those lands, you know, is is how water is being diverted and and absorbed and things of that nature. You know, so I I just saw Todd, Todd get brought up to to the to the presenter, so if he wants to take that, absolutely, I will speak to your other comment that yes. If and when we we develop a park or, you know, build something, you know, again, I think it's being intentional. Understanding of what is out there, meaning, you know, if we can acquire five acres of land next to Crooked Creek Park and build a second park. That doesn't make sense because that need is already being met, you know, at at a Crooked Creek Park. So yes, I think, you know, again, long term, if we were to build a a facility or a building. Again, that is, that is something that we can look at, I think that's where that feasibility study comes in. To understand what is best served in that facility. Again, it wouldn't, you know, it wouldn't open and have 15 basketball courts because that had that suited with Carolina courts, it wouldn't have an ice rink. Because that suited with extreme ice center, so again, it would, you know, if we were to do that, I think the feasibility study would come out of that with some of those major suggestions.
Yeah, I think Hayden's absolutely right, that's exactly why we don't want to recommend you do it or what needs to go in it. That's where the feasibility and the business plan looks at your market and identifies where there are gaps. Because, you know, also what Braden showed where you have a young population, but you also have a growing active adult 55 plus population. So more and more, the national trends are towards multi generational recreation indoors. Where you're not seeing teen centers and teens go here and seniors go some other place. It's how do you bring them together and that's where these larger community style centers help give you the best of both worlds.
I'm not sure if Todd wants to speak just very briefly on the wetland study out of Crooked Creek.
Yeah, Hayden, appreciate it, yeah, I can speak to that. Mr. Cohen, we did have a, we have a, we had a design in place, put some trails out there and put a fishing pond. Once the transition happened to the with the temporary town manager coming in. I got to look at the design, I held off, we held off a little bit due to the transitioning. And then when I got back after looking at the design, I was a little concerned with the the age of the existing wetland survey that was done. And so, so I wanted to make sure the town was going to was a was compliant with all environmental requirements. And so I asked the former temporary town manager to do a wetland study, a new one. And so we did go out, hired a consultant to do a new wetland study. And it kind of find out pretty much the rest of the site is a pretty much a wetland. Every every acreage that we wanted that fishing pond to be on and we wanted that multi purpose field to be on was pretty much wetland, so that has an extreme cost that could be done, you know, as long as you want to pay the mitigation costs. But at the time, it was it was not feasible because it basically doubled the price of the the project.
That makes sense, I just don't know where that got lost in the communications or at least it did to me, I never knew that, but but then again, I wouldn't, I wasn't there so very well, y'all may have talked about it, but but that makes sense.
Mayor, this is Todd Barber?
Yes.
Okay, well, I guess I saw in the survey that people were pretty smart about putting off any major projects until after the pandemic. So I think kind of what I'm looking for after seeing this is, I think since we got bond, part money, part bond money left is, and we can use it into two places. I would think I'd be looking to see what we could add or do to enhance those two parks. And then add to it, that's I guess what I would be looking at, maybe we could do something that matches what the people were looking for, like high priority and, you know, what they were looking for in the survey. So I guess as we get into the budget and y'all start presenting that, that's kind of what I'm looking at. How can we make these two parks with the bond money that we have better or what can we add to them? So that's kind of where I'm looking at after this is is my next step in the vision. Just wanted to add that in, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Barber, do any other closing remarks?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Well, what we would like to do is, if there are no further questions or closing remarks, like I said. We will send this out to you probably in the morning. And give you a few days to take a look at it and probably you should expect a call from from Hayden and or myself. Just reaching out to you to see if there are any points of clarification that you felt like you need. Or any questions that you might have, and if so, we will brief the entire board. David, sorry you didn't know about the the wetlands and where that got lost in transition. I know in some places up at the Mallard Creek Greenway, what they've done with their wetlands is they've used a, they've used it as a walking trail, so only thing I'd really heard about it to any significance was that there's a whole lot of wetlands out there.
We knew that when they bought, when we bought that land, that it was a lot of wetlands out there.
I apologize that you are not up on the latest greatest information on that.
That's okay.
Thank you, everyone, I know that that we went went over our time, but you know, as as we stated at the beginning, this is a big part of our our future. You know, a big guiding document, so as Mr. McLauren said, we will send this out in its entirety. As long, as well as the link to the the park and rec website for you to view. You know, tomorrow and then next week, we'll follow up and feel free to to send any, you know, any additional comments via email or phone. Again, I want to thank Nele and Brayton for for their time this evening. As well as the all the rest of the the park and rec staff, again, you see me here, you know, on every other Tuesday, but there's a there's a big team behind us that makes this function, so as we move forward in the budget process, I look forward to those philosophical conversations. You know, I think we all agree that we're here for for the community and making the community better is, you know, works for everyone involved, so again, thank you for everyone's time. And Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, it's my understanding, we're going to just go on mute until the 6:30 meeting starts. So take, like, what is it?
See you just a bit.
Okay?
Right, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Be all back in a few.
Can we get a motion? To close?
Everybody's pretty much muted already.
Don't move.
All right, Mr. McIntyre's moved. All in favor, Mr. Cohen?
Yep.
Head?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
And Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Okay. Tonight's council meeting with roll call. Marcus McIntyre?
Present.
David Cohen?
Here.
Jerry Morris? I think I heard it here. Todd Barber?
Present.
And Mike Head?
Here.
At this time, we'll do the the pledge of allegiance. Richard, would you kindly lead us in the pledge?
Be glad to. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
At this time, we bow our heads in a moment of reflection. Thank you, everyone, I believe Kathy, what's next? I can just get it up on my phone, is the additions and deletions?
Can we acknowledge staff first?
Oh, right, roll call for staff, sorry Kathy.
Okay, so we have Town Manager McLauren online, Karen Walter, our attorney. Jim Wadwitz, Carrie Warner, who is our HR Director, Jim Wadwitz is our Finance Director. Adam McLamb, Public Works, Todd Hunsinger, Engineering Department. Randy Dees, Planning, Hayden Cramer, Parks and Rec. Abby Ball, Communications, Alicia Massey, Tax. Tim Jones, who is also in our Planning Department. I'm Kathy Queen, the clerk, Abby, did I miss anyone?
Nope, I think we have everybody.
Okay, we also have, as guests, we have Chairman Richard Helms. We have Assistant County Manager Brian Matthews. We have Director of Outreach and Community Affairs, Warren Cooksey, who may not be on the screen yet, but will be upcoming shortly. He is online, I'm sure. And also, we have Clover Group Development Team, who will be introduced by our Planning Director Brandy when it's their time to speak. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. First is additions and deletions, we have a an addition for 4C. A the Black History Month proclamation, if someone would make that motion?
I'll I'll make that motion that we want to add the proclamation for Black History Month, item 4C.
Thank you, Mr. Head?
Approved.
Mr. Cohen?
Approved.
Morris? Are you on mute?
Approved.
Okay, Mr. Barber?
Approved.
Did I forget anybody? I think so. Okay, um, if there's no other further additions and deletions, I did a motion to approve the amended agenda, please.
Motion to approve the agenda, the amended agenda.
Mr. McIntyre has made the motion to approve. Mr. Head?
Approved.
Morris?
Approved.
Barber?
Approved.
Mr. Cohen?
Approved.
Thank you. Uh, first up on our presentations, Chairman Helms. And, uh, I guess, uh, we'll just call you a sidekick, Brian. Uh, Richard?
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir. I can hear you fine. I hope you can hear me well.
Oh, I hear you fine. I just wanted to take a moment to thank you and Brian for taking the time out to attend this meeting to update us where we stand on our water and sewer from a county perspective and any upcoming open meetings. And to assure you that the council has directed staff to work with the county and continue to work with the county to solve these water and sewer issues moving forward for generations to come. And look forward to a mutually approved agreement for not just Indian Trail, but something that benefits our county as a whole. And, uh, so at that being said, I am going to yield the floor to you, sir.
Well, I, I do appreciate the opportunity to share some of this information with you on our utility structure. I will mention that we've got scheduled a, um, meeting at the Ag Center on March the eleventh that, uh, we've invited all the municipalities and we'll cover it in more detail from a county perspective. But we're looking forward to that. I can tell you that after one of the last meetings, I had the opportunity to, uh, spend some time with three of your council members. And I found that to be very beneficial and we've continued to keep in touch. And I'd like to thank you that. With that, uh, we'll, and, uh, Kathy, if I just say next slide, we'll, uh, then we're ready for the next one. That's great. Uh, so, you know, what I want to do here is to provide an overview of the county's growth and our infrastructure. Uh, also provide an overview of the infrastructure and current capital projects within the town of Indian Trail. And then provide an overview of our sewer capacity. Next slide. And, you know, we start by looking at our, our growth. Uh, if you look at our growth in dwellings from two thousand sixteen to two thousand eighteen, you'll see that the, uh, northern sector of Indian Trail and Stallings has had a considerable amount of growth. And I'm gonna try to move. I've got a lot of slides here, so I'm gonna try to move and not consume too much of your time. But we start, next slide, we'll start with population and service summary. Uh, if you look at two thousand ten, we had a population of a little over two hundred and one thousand. And we've got listed here two hundred, two thousand eighteen. But in fact, in two thousand twenty, the note, number was closer to two hundred and forty thousand, which was a twenty percent increase over two thousand ten. And the scary part is that it's estimated that the population in two thirty, twenty thirty will be in the neighborhood of three hundred thousand. And, and, and our, in the lower chart, you'll see that, um, Indian Trail, uh, utilizes the utilities very heavily. Ninety percent of the Indian Trail population has water service and seventy-five percent has sewer service. So we need to plan carefully to make sure we service these individuals. Next slide. Next will be water accounts. Uh, Indian Trail has roughly twenty percent, twenty-six percent of our accounts. Uh, I think the county is, is also close to twenty-five percent. So Indian Trail is a major use of, of the utility system. And with, uh, with twelve, twelve and a half thousand, uh, residential and then almost twelve hundred of non-residential. And when you look at water demand, it's about twenty-two percent of our, our consumption. So, uh, it's very effective. Now, the thing about water demand is also reflective on sewer usage. And Indian Trails is between twenty and twenty-five percent of water and sewer for our entire system. If I'm going too fast or you have a question, don't hesitate to stop me. I think all of you have these slides so you can refer back to them. And I'll be glad to make myself available if you have more details at a later time. So, Todd, let's talk about wastewater, because you've heard the concerns where, uh, wastewater, we're, we're approaching our capacity. And, you know, Indian Trail is sixty-eight percent of the Crooked Creek Basin and forty percent of the Poplin's Basin. And the next slide will show that they're twenty, you're twenty percent of the Twelve Mile Creek for an overall roughly twenty-five percent capacity of our system. Now currently Crooked Creek, and, and Brian, if I misspeak this, correct me, is, is approaching over eighty-five percent of this capacity. So it's not just one of our, uh, facilities that's approaching capacity. We're approaching capacity in a number of hours. Next slide. And that's where I was saying that you're twenty percent of Twelve Mile Creek. And Twelve Mile Creek is, is a seven and a half million gallon facility. And it's approaching between ninety-two and ninety-three percent of this, of this capacity. So that's, that's critical for us. Next slide. If you look at our, if you look at our water system and our, our map, you can see it's contract, uh, concentrated for, for a great part. And this is the Yadkin, including the Yadkin Ri- uh, River. Uh, it's approaching, approaching, uh, its capacity. And, and if you look how dense it is in the, in the northwestern part of, part of the county. Much of Indian Trail is in the Yadkin Basin. And much of the information that was disseminated in the past, that the Yadkin Water was only for the West, this is not correct. Yadkin Water is to address the needs of all the Yadkin Basin. Now, one thing that we'll accomplish with the Catawba and Yadkin, they will be connected together. But this will provide backup for one another in case, case we lose one of those systems. So right now, in our current capacity, if we lost the Catawba, much of Union County would lose water. This will give us an, uh, an ability to, to, uh, back one another up. So they will be connected, but it's a connection for backup more than anything else. Next slide. If you look at our sewer, sewer system, it is also concentrated in, in the area of Indian Trail. Y'all are, like we said, you're twenty-five percent of the total usage of the county. But, uh, and it's important because if you look at your housing and your commercial, it's, it's critical. And we'll go to next slide. And this is just a, a picture of water and sewer to explain the complexity in Indian Trail and, uh, how we, how we manage that water. Uh, again, that's where ninety percent of your citizens are using water and seventy-five percent are using sewer. It's a strong network. Next, let's talk about some of the activities that are planned for, uh, Indian Trail. Uh, we've got a elevated storage tank in plan. The project includes design and construction of two million gallon elevated water storage in Indian Trail. That's at Old Monroe Road and Brandon Oaks Parkway, as well improvements to the Highway seventy-five booster pump station, which will provide it. I know that I had personally heard of some people in Brandon Oaks that had some, uh, pressure concerns, and this will alleviate that. Right now, we're coordinating the design and permitting with NC DOT Old Monroe Road Widening Project. And, and this project's estimated cost is like nine point one million dollars. Next slide. Also, we've got activities going on, Poplin Road Pump Station, and these are interim improvements. Try to, uh, try to mitigate running this limit of hitting our ninety-five percent to where we have to stop permitting. But the project, project includes an equalization tank, transfer pumps, piping improvements and related mechanical electrical control systems improvements. The project is integral to match managing wet water flows and providing reliable and efficient wastewater service to our residents. Project starts in the winter of two thousand twenty with a completion of, in the spring of two thousand twenty-two. Estimated cost is about fifteen point eight million. As you can see, the water and sewer projects are very expensive and time consuming to implement. That is why we have to work together to evaluate and plan for our commitment to new developments and commercial. When I say our, I'm talking about all municipalities and the county. Our lack of two-way communication is how we've gotten to approaching the ninety-five percent of commitment of our sewer resources. All municipalities have received a resolution to commit to work together. This will allow all parties to be on the same play sheet and prevent this in the future. Tell you, I'd like to thank several of your council members and Mayor, Marcus and Todd and Michael for their reaching out to our commissioners and keeping us informed on what's important to Indian Trail. And I look forward to, I look forward to those talks. Next. Poplin Road Basin, new developments. I think this is interesting. Now, we've got permitted obligated. What, what is permitted obligated? Permitted obligated is once a subdivision or a commercial development applies for permit, is approved by the state and pays their connection fees, they are permitted and that we're obligated to provide them service. Is that a fair statement, Brian?
Yes, sir. That is absolutely accurate.
Okay, so from this standpoint, from the Poplin, we got four hundred and twenty-two thousand gallons permitted. And the preliminary not permitted, those are the ones that are in the pipeline. But yet they haven't reached the permitting phase. So they are ones that are currently doing their homework, applying to the state and doing everything to get ready. And we've got an estimated five hundred thousand there. And, and if you look at the, the Poplin Road, you know, it's permitted for one point five million gallons. Average daily is one point oh seven. And I tell you, Michael, I know that you and I had conversations before about neighborhoods being inundated with flooding and, and trying to mitigate that. Well, that water inflow kind of maxes out these plants beside the normal fluid, that inflow of water. So we've had, we've had a rainy year. I think two thousand twenty was one of the wettest years we've had in history. And so therefore it has made this problem worse. So for that, what we're doing is we're, we're monitoring this on a, on a monthly basis, reporting up on a quarterly basis, hoping that we can mitigate this and stay below that ninety-five percent. But Poplin also has point four two gallons, million gallons obligated with another point five that is preliminary. So it'll be over capacity if all of them went through. So let's look, look at the next and talk about Crooked Creek Basin. Crooked Creek is, uh, basically around eighty-five percent of capacity. And I'm going off memory on Brian and I'm seeing him nod, nod his head, so that's good. But in a permitted obligated, they've got three hundred and three thousand preliminary, seven hundred and fifty thousand with fifteen projects. Their average flows about one point four, one point one four million gallons with obligated a point four eight and preliminary a point seven five, which again will take it beyond its capacity. I think Atrium West Phase One is in that, uh, obligated, uh, capacity. But the, eh, the what, uh, Atrium Wet Phase Two and, and three, which is two additional buildings, they are not permitted yet. So those are, you know, those are opportunities that, that are good for the county and good for Indian Trail. Next, let's go to Twelve Mile Creek. And this is an interesting one because it's permitted up to twelve million gallons. And currently it's, it's operating at a seven point five million gallons with a daily of five point two five and obligated another one point six nine. And with the preliminary, another point eight will take us over capacities with. Now, one of the things we're investigating is that probably one of the fastest solutions that we, we could do is to upgrade that plant for another one point five million. My cons, my personal concern for that is, is that if we do that, it's a short-term fixed and three to five years from now, we'll be in the same situation. So we've got to think long-term. But, you know, we are working on it. We're looking at, 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 uh, opportunities to mitigate the situation. Uh, the inflow, uh, depends that if the weather's a little different, it's, it may give us a little breather, uh, but it will be that a breather. Next one. Twelve Mile Creek, if we expand it to nine million gallons, another million and a half. Project includes, uh, in fluid pump stations, secondary treatment process, UV disinfection system and related electrical and mechanical. Estimated cost of the project is twenty-one to twenty-eight million. Now understand in our, in our original plan, we weren't planning on making this expansion because we just fish, finished a million and a half gallon expansion. The initial plans to expand this, the next step, wasn't until twenty thirty-four or twenty thirty-five, one of the two. So, you know, what happened? We've had a influx of new developments and commitments and, uh, obligations on our system that is pushing us to, uh, to try to find other avenues. And I can tell you, we'll be able to give you more insight maybe March eleventh as we, uh, as, because I tell you what, this is the daily discussion we're having. Uh, but the process to improve that thing to one point five, another one point five million gallons is two to three years. Now, only saving.
Great. Actually, I'm sorry. It's three to four years, sir. Sorry about that.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yes, sir. Three to four years.
I'm trying to be optimistic. Anyway, it, like I said, you know, the fixes aren't, aren't, aren't quick. And that's, uh, that's, that's why we have to, this, this process, this resolution you have on that study. I would, would like to discuss that with you more to, uh, make sure that we can be in sync. And current boards and future boards will have a roadmap on how to make sure we don't get in this kind of problem, uh, as often. Next slide. And this is a little more detail on the Twelve Mile with the seven point five, uh, average daily flow, and that's including inflow. Uh, so, you know, here's how six months ago, you know, we're told seventy percent, we're in good shape. And then the question was asked, uh, what about what we've got in the pipeline? And that's when, uh, we really found out that we weren't as good a shape as we thought we were. And, you know, it's, uh, it's gonna take us to six point nine four just what's obligated. And I can tell you, I've got, I've been contacted last couple of days, uh, several individuals that, that are in the process, the preliminary that we talked about, wanting to know how they can, uh, jump forward, jump ahead. And, and frankly, our process, and Brian, you keep me honest here. Our process is that we will follow the normal process and we can't allow people to jump in front of one another. Uh, we're trying to manage that. It's, it's, it's important to maintain our integrity that people, as they got in, got into the, uh, in the system and working toward, that they, they're honored there.
Yes.
Is that a fair statement, Brian?
Very fair. And, and we'll actually give a outline of that process at the March eleventh meeting.
That's great. That's great. Well, and next slide. You know, the Board of Commissioners directed staff to limit permit connections once we hit ninety-five percent. And we last figure I saw was ninety-two point five, ninety-two point eight. And, you know, the thing that can help us there is the people that are in between the preliminary and the permitted, some of them are going to take some time. So that's why we're trying to work diligently to find alternate solutions to make sure we don't hit that ninety-five percent. Because we don't want to get into a situation that we found ourselves in the mid-two thousands, cede our capacities and the state will shut us down. So we're trying to manage it. We're quarterly reviewing it with the board. Actually, staff is reviewing unofficially with us on a monthly basis. So we're trying to keep this process moving forward. And what we're asking is we're asking for your help and that we can work together to make sure that these capacities are maintained within our system. We are trying to make changes. I can tell you, I talked about the Twelve Mile Creek being a short-term. There's a long-term option that's being looked at right now with another wastewater plant in the northern part of the county. It would also give relief to Poplin and Crooked Creek. And it would help eliminate some of that. So that is what I consider a longer term. And it's, I think it's important that we think beyond the short-term and also plan for the future. So you'll hear more about that on the eleventh. And but it's we need to continue our communications. And, you know, like I said, I've had the pleasure of hearing from a number of your council and the mayor on a regular basis. I'd like to continue that. And next I would just say questions that you may have.
In the nature of time, if we could I'll leave it up to the board. If you want to ask the questions, if you want to send them through the town manager, through to Brian and get those questions answered in a more thorough manner.
Well, they can call me and I'll speak to them personally.
There you have it. And you can speak to them personally. Richard, thank you for bringing that. We know the dire need to improve this. And I can speak for the council from our last meeting. They want to work through this and come up with a long-term mutual solution that's there for generations, not just a few years till we kick the ball down the road.
And I totally agree with that. Michael, I would ask permission to cover one thing else.
Please do.
Quickly, it's just thirty seconds. Before we leave, I'd like to ask to address a current need in our county. Our health department is in the process of providing COVID nineteen vaccines. We've had great success due to the planning and execution of our health department. One thing has been noticed that the turnout of our minority community has been unusually low. The black community is running about eight to nine percent and Hispanic around three percent. If you can help us get the message out that we're providing these vaccines at no cost, it would be greatly appreciated. All they have to do is call the health department and they will schedule their shots. I have gotten more emails from citizens that have utilized this COVID process saying it's amazing how efficient and how personable and helpful that staff was. So we'd like, if you have a way that you can help your community know that this is available, would appreciate it.
Hey, Mr.
Yes, go ahead, Marcus. Go right ahead.
Question for the chairman. In regards to the, thank you, first of all, thank you for coming, both you and Brian. We do appreciate it. We appreciate the relationship with the county and how things are going. Also appreciate the work that your staff is doing in regards to the vaccine. But a question on that would be, are there any age requirements that or who should I talk to if I want to be an advocate to try and get some of our minority members within Union County to come out?
Well, the focus has been so far probably sixty-five and up.
Okay.
They are opening up some of the, but, you know, when you got eight percent of the potential population, that's concerning. And we don't know if the message is not getting out and people don't realize that this is a free service. And actually, when you make an appointment at the health department, they'll get you in. Most of the time, people are in and out within an hour. And, you know, after the shot, they ask you to sit there fifteen minutes to make sure there's no negative reactions. But it's been very positive. So, you know, both these particular minority communities, I don't know why they aren't taking advantage of this, but we want to make sure they have that availability.
So would you be prudent for me to just kind of call down to talk to somebody who'd have been the health director or somebody just to get the facts? Or if I put it out there, I'm not giving incorrect information.
I mean, Michelle Lancaster will be glad to talk to you. She's been the overall deputy manager. She has been setting this process up. You know, we're trying to get it out to the churches to make sure everybody's aware. And I know that there have been several people, you know, asked me what does it cost? And so, you know, normally vaccines aren't cheap. Well, this one's one of the few you'll run into that's free.
All right. Thank you, sir.
If I can chime in on that one, Richard, yes, the process is very smooth. I was under Phase One as medical personnel being in the funeral home. Move exactly. Union County is definitely one of the more smooth-running ones. And you're correct with, you know, Marcus, there's a big concern here amongst the minority communities not getting the COVID and shot and with COVID being positive within the communities and mortality rates real high. With that, I mean, any help would be appreciated, you know, like Richard said, to reach out. My questions for the town manager and Abby, if we can get something from the county commissioners or the health department that we can just keep posting on our Facebook page and our social media and not just do it in English, but can we please do it in Spanish? And just point blankness, they're afraid.
Yes, sir, we can.
They're just afraid to come out and get it. They don't know it. They don't realize it's free, but they still fear in a lot of communities of retribution against them.
Mr. Mayor, I can reach out to Michelle in the morning and try to get the flyer information. Also, something I was going to mention later on tonight is I've spoken to Abby about reaching out to Atrium to see if we can actually do a COVID vaccine here somewhere in Indian Trail also. And if we do that, then we'll certainly keep the county aware of what we're working on on our end.
And Mike, we're encouraging that. Atrium has been a huge contributor. We had a mass vaccination nation down at the Ag Center and they participated. So I can't say enough positive. They have really stepped up to the plate. We appreciate it.
We'll keep your staff informed as to what we're doing. And on a personal note, I appreciate the work that y'all are doing through your health department.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes. And I'll follow up with that. We sent out an invitation to the health department to come in as we did to you for our next meeting to give a COVID update, vaccination update and Union County update and how the town, how they feel the town should move forward and accept. So they'll be here at our next meeting.
Okay, let us know how we can work with you.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, if you wouldn't mind, I just want to give a few dates out so your board has some information, if you don't mind, just to
Sure. Would you please email them also?
Absolutely. Be happy to email them.
Thank you. I have a problem writing right now.
All right. Well, I just wanted to let the board know that the important dates that we're dealing with for the water and sewer capacity issue is February fifteenth. We'll have a special meeting of the Board of Commissioners at one o'clock. That is to discuss financials with our water and sewer utility, how rates work and the structure of rates. We will have a follow-up to that discussion on March the first at three o'clock. That will be basically a continuation of the rate discussion. We'll go over the impacts of alternatives and what they will do if they're selected and what that will cause as far as rate changes. Then on March the eleventh, as the chairman pointed out, we have a meeting at the Ag Center and that starts right now. It's intended to start at eight o'clock. We will get the final details out to you quickly. Those have not been finished at this point in time. We will have some updates to what's going on as far as water sewer capacity and different projects. And then we will have a component of that where municipalities can talk directly to the commissioners as we had before and given everyone the opportunity to raise their concerns and their questions. And then anticipated on April the nineteenth, we will have a meeting with the board to get direction on what are those solutions that they choose for capacity. Those are important dates. I'll send those to Mike so Mike can disseminate that to your board members in email form.
Thank you, Brian.
Yes, sir.
I'll allow you to leave now, Richard.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to join you.
Thank you. What's next on agenda, Kathy?
We have Mr. Cooksey is up to speak on
Warren, are you here?
Yes, sir. Ready to go when you say so.
As cheerful as ever.
I try.
Oh, you really shouldn't be standing in the middle of the road like that.
Hey, I treat my Zoom background the way Groucho Marx treated his principal. I don't like it. I have others. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of council and staff. It's good to be back with you even under these circumstances. The last time I spoke to council, it was actually back in twenty eighteen before the Monroe Expressway opened. My original hope had been to come back after the first year ended, sometimes in spring of twenty twenty, to give you an update on how it went. Obviously, things didn't pan out that way, but I am here tonight to give you the two-year update and let you know how things are going with the Monroe Expressway. So next slide, please. First, I'd like to start out with a little context. The North Carolina Turnpike Authority is a business unit of NC DOT focused on tolling. We do operations, maintenance and toll collection. We're involved in eight projects across the state. The ones labeled in green are the ones that are open. In blue are under construction and in white are in development. As you can see, most of them are actually in this area between the Monroe Expressway and the I seventy-seven express lanes in operation. We have the forty-five express lanes under construction next door in Charlotte and then a couple of projects in development next door in Mclemmer County. So we stay busy across the state, but chiefly in the urban areas. Next slide. But of course, my focus here today is with the Monroe Expressway. There we are. Also known as Toll US Seventy-four Bypass. Wait to make sure it comes up here.
Sorry, give me one second. Something happened with the presentation.
Copy that.
We've been having trouble with their systems. It's not heavy.
It's a placeholder slide, so I can talk a bit over it. This is, of course, an eighteen-mile-long four-lane median divided by, like the photo behind me, you see. And it was built to provide a high-speed alternative to US Seventy-four for travelers through and in Union County. It's operated and maintained, again, by the Turnpike Authority. We are responsible for that stretch of road in partnership with our colleagues at Division Ten, but by statute, it's ours. So I was hopeful that things would be back up by that point.
All right, I'm going to have to close. I'm going to have to stop my screen share for a second. I apologize.
I'll use this opportunity to note that one of the, one of the decisions that our board makes, and that's one of the things that makes us different within NC DOT, we have our own board of directors that sets our own policies. When it comes to the toll rate policy, our board established a policy with automatic annual slight toll increases. So we can keep up with inflation, can keep up with increased costs over the years without having to have kind of separate votes and separate notifications. So that's something that you'll see pretty much every year for the Monroe Expressway sometime around the end of December. The press release will go out saying that the toll increase of a couple of percentage points that affects all drivers will occur at the beginning of each year. We've done that twice now with the Triangle Expressway in Wake and Durham Counties. It's been operational for about nine years now. Folks are a lot more used to it and folks in Union County will get used to that as well. But it does make for smoother operations and maintenance because we have a more predictable approach to our rates rather than letting them slide. Some other jurisdictions have kind of let them slide, but they've done big increases due to smaller Oh, good. We're back. So next slide is the was the title slide and let's go one more over.
Sorry about that.
Sorry. Yeah, I've talked over that one. So let's look at the next. Okay, so here is the, whoops, backup one, please. There we go. Here is the map of the full eighteen-mile-long quarter. I draw your attention to the green dots representing the interchanges. Those interchanges create, in essence, seven segments. And we do a lot of our tracking and activities for the Monroe Expressway in these seven segments from west to east. I wanted to set this up because some of the graphs I'm going to show replicate these seven segments from the Indian Trail side of the Expressway to the Marshville side. So on the next slide, if I, we'll start with some transaction and traffic statistics. Next slide, please. If I could come last spring, I would have shown you what our first year looked like. This is our average weekday traffic divided by quarter. Probably a good way of showing the growth of the Expressway in its first year and what a year it was for us in that first year. Significant growth quarter to quarter from winter to spring. We peaked in summer. We did see a slight drop off all across the Expressway for autumn of twenty nineteen. But it didn't go back to the spring numbers. So this told us that people were adapting to and using the Monroe Expressway more and more as the year went on. And you can see that pattern fits in pretty much each of the seven segments, although the numbers diminish as you go west to east, which shouldn't be a surprise given the population patterns. The next slide shows similar quarterly numbers for the first three quarters of twenty twenty. Our fourth quarter numbers aren't quite in yet. And I had originally anticipated seeing that pattern continue, but this is where you see the dramatic impact of the changes that coronavirus have made all over, but particularly to the Monroe Expressway for this chart. You see that dip in the spring, whereas spring exceeded winter, second quarter exceeded first quarter in twenty nineteen. We saw that significant dip, although things did come back in summertime for the, for the third quarter there as more and more people were driving on the Monroe Expressway. I'll note with this slide that the Monroe Expressway is coming back from COVID nineteen faster than the Triangle Expressway. It is still struggling to get its numbers up to about fifty percent of pre-COVID nineteen numbers. But so we're seeing this bounce back for the Monroe Expressway. Next slide, please. We get a lot of questions about truck traffic in particular, so I wanted to show you by segment what our percentage of large trucks are. We classify vehicles based on axle count, a large truck, a class three vehicle, four axles or more. And you can see again from west to east, we have anywhere from fourteen to eighteen percent of our traffic. This was third quarter of twenty twenty, made up of those large vehicles. Again, by comparison, the Triangle Expressway, a very different facility after nine years of operation on a good day for a truck in the Triangle Expressway, we might see three and a half percent. So we see significant truck traffic on the Monroe Expressway in each of the seven segments, but particularly on the eastern side. And I'll cover a little more about trucks a little later in the presentation. The next slide is a look at transaction counts showing again the dip. This is by month since the Expressway opened. Some of that kind of replicates what you saw with traffic, but transactions are, of course, more where the money is associated. So I used this slide to note that while we are seeing lower revenues than expected for this fiscal year, we're adjusting our expenditures accordingly. And at present, we are, of course, concerned, but not worried about where the initial finances are. Every toll facility has a different ramp-up process, ramp-up experience. And so we bank reserves to take care of that. Again, we can monitor our expenditures so that we don't exceed our revenues. The line in the middle there shows you month by month how many of our transactions are prepaid through transponders such as the NC Quick Pass or Easy Pass or others. You can see that in the first couple of years or so of the project, we are somewhere between forty-five and sixty-five percent depending on, or fifty-five percent depending on the month. As the facility matures, we should see those numbers go up, those percentages go up as more and more people have transponders and prepaid to get that thirty-five percent discount. and prepaid to get that 35% discount on tolls that we offer for prepayment. The next slide will shift to quarter impacts. We get a lot of questions about how is the Monroe Expressway changing traffic in the county? And starting with the next slide there, we, what we did was about six months before the Expressway opened, we set up some counting stations across a few days, counted, did some traffic counts, including trucks and regular two-axle vehicles. We then came back about six months after opening to see what the early impact of the Monroe Expressway was. The next slide kind of summarizes a good bit of that data. We did see about a 10% decrease in total vehicle counts on the parallel roads such as US 74, 218, secret shortcut and so on. Depending on the, the counting station, anywhere from a 5 to 27% reduction in truck traffic on US 74. And perhaps most interestingly, just within the first six months, the number of trucks making a through trip or the percentage of trucks making a through trip on US 74 decreased from 24% to 16%. So, about a third of those trucks making a cross-county trip had already shifted to the Monroe Expressway within about six months of opening. The next slide talks about impact on travel time. We're seeing that a full-length trip on the Monroe Expressway can save a driver anywhere from 11 to 14 minutes. We've heard some people say they save more time. We're comfortable with the 11 to 14, but I'm not going to contradict anyone who says they get a faster, faster trip. Shorter distance trips are, of course, saving some time too, depending on how short, anywhere from two to eight minutes. And we did see also on US 74, travel times increase or improve by reduction in travel times of up to four minutes for some drivers on US 74, which you would expect if there are fewer cars and fewer trucks on 74 because they're on the Monroe Expressway, you can travel on 74 a little faster as well. Next slide introduces a good bit of safety. Safety is always a concern when we're talking about high-speed travel. The next slide is a reminder that we do have the Highway Patrol out on the Monroe Expressway. The posted speed limit's 65 miles an hour. That is plenty fast for folks to save time. We don't want people putting themselves and others in jeopardy by going much faster than that. So, we do have our Highway Patrol colleagues out there enforcing the speed limit. The next slide, we are also partnered with the Incident Management Assistance Patrol for the NC DOT Division 10 team here to provide incident management assistance for anyone who breaks down on the Monroe Expressway, gets a flat tire, runs out of gas or is involved in a crash. The iMap team comes out and helps with those situations as well. The next slide highlights something. We're trying out a new type of pavement marking. Although it's rare, wrong-way driving can be a very deadly safety concern. And so, in addition to the usual signage that we have on some of the interchanges, we are trying some of this, some two-way reflective paint on the surface of the, of the interchanges. If you're driving the correct way, you won't see a thing except a yellow line or a white line or a white box. But if a driver turns the wrong way, you'll, that driver should see on this, you know, on the pavement marking, on the roadway, do not enter wrong way in addition to the signage that's there already, which we hope will further dissuade people from driving the wrong way on Monroe, on the Monroe Expressway. Want to conclude with some words about customer service. The next slide introduces that. So, the next slide highlights that we do have an in-person customer service center in the vicinity of the Monroe Expressway to handle cash payments or setting up a transponder account, any questions that folks have. It's located roughly in the middle of the corridor. Next slide shows you what it looks like and highlights that from the time we opened in October of 2018 until our temporary closure in March of last year due to COVID-19, we had received 35,000 customer visits to that customer service center. It reopened in mid-August of last year under COVID-19 protocols, so face masks, social distancing and the like. But the team there is available for anyone who has an in-person question, wants to speak to a live human being, can go to our NC Quick Pass Customer Service Center and do so about any Turnpike Authority facility. To close on the next slide, there are numerous ways to get in touch with us besides visiting the customer service center. You can learn more about the Turnpike Authority on our pages on the NC.gov, NCDOT.gov site. NCQuickPass.com is your home for all things related to tolling. Folks can pay their bills there or set up a transponder account, maintain their transponder account on NCQuickPass.com. We have a couple of Twitter accounts to follow, NCTurnpike and NC underscore Quick Pass. And our toll-free customer service number that folks can call if they, if they have questions and don't want to, to travel out to the customer service center or go online is 8777 my pass or as you see on the screen there, 8777697277. Lots of sevens there. So, Mayor and Council, I thank you for that opportunity to let you know how things are going on the Monroe Expressway. Next slide says, "Thank you." And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to take them or you can email me. My email address was on the first slide, RWCooksey@NCDOT.gov.
Were there any questions for Warren?
Well, this is Todd Barber. I just want to thanks, thanks for coming in and to let y'all know y'all doing a great job hitting my credit card so my teenagers can go up and down the express freighter winged. So, anyway, he's probably, it's fact, the way he likes to drive, he's probably gonna be a Highway Patrol customer one day too, but we'll see. By the way, I appreciate you coming in. All right, thanks.
Thanks for having me and, and I'd like to do these updates annually for a while until the Monroe Expressway becomes just second nature for everybody.
Warren, you're always welcome.
Saves him all the time going to Wingate University. It really does. I mean, he gets there in no time.
You're always welcome anytime you have any kind of an update you want to provide, even if it's a two-minute update or something happens. You just let Kathy know, let myself know or Mike. I'd like to see you twice a year personally.
Oh, well, thank you.
You know, so we know how the road's going. We have more interchanges in Indian Trail than any other town in Union County. So, I think updates are, they're helpful. And we can put your slides out there and continue to help this grow and be better. I have noticed the shorter times on 74 and I too also am a contributing donator to the Turnpike Authority. My wife uses it for work when she delivers the mail and she has to go across the county. It's been, it's been a lifesaver.
Happy to have you as a customer.
I'm sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy, what's next on our agenda?
The Black History Month proclamation.
Ah, right. Okay. All right, all right, the proclamation for Black History Month. Whereas Black History Month is an annual celebration of achievements and a time for recognizing the central role of Black American people in our history. Whereas this observance affords us, affords a special opportunity to become more knowledgeable about heritage and to honor the many Black leaders who have continued to strive for equality and have together made significant contributions in the growth of our community, state and nation. Whereas we recognize and honor a few of the many prominent historical Black leaders who, while not as well-known as Harriet Tubman, Thurgood Marshall and Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., have all made significant contributions to advancing Black lives, our community and our nation as a whole. W, W.B. Dubois, born 1868, was an influential activist who sought to campaign for full equality between Blacks and White. And while he did not live to see significant change, he laid the framework for the NAACP and future civil rights movements. Dr. Charles R. Drew, born 1904, was an American physician who developed ways to process and store blood plasma in blood banks. He organized first large-scale blood bank in the United States and directed blood plasma programs for both the United States and Great Britain during World War II. And Shirley Chisholm, born 1924, was elected to the New York House of Representatives in 1968 where she used her time in Congress to campaign for women's and civil rights. She was the first Black Congresswoman and the first Black woman to run for the Democratic presidential nomination. Whereas in 1976, Black History Week was expanded to become a step, to become established as Black History Month and is now celebrated all over North America, Canada and Great Britain. And whereas Black History Month is a time for all citizens of the town of Indian Trail to remember the contributions and legacy of those who helped build our nation, fought against prejudice and secure lives of dignity and opportunity for all of our citizens, advanced the cause of civil rights for all Americans and in doing so greatly strengthened our families and our communities. Now, therefore, I, Michael L. Alvarez, Mayor of the Town of Indian Trail, do hereby proclaim February 2024 as Black History Month in, in Indian Trail, North Carolina, and call on the citizens of the Town of Indian Trail to honor the history and achievements of Black Americans and to reflect on the centuries of struggle that have brought us this time of reckoning, redemption and hope. Duly proclaim this ninth day of February 2021. Thank you. As we move on, okay, that brings us to the captain's update, correct?
Mayor General Comments? You don't have any public comments?
You don't have any public comments?
Mr. McLauren.
So, I will open and close the public comment portion of the meeting and bring up Captain James onto the screen as soon as he's in the room. Let us know.
Can you hear me?
Captain, are you there?
I am here. Can you hear me?
I, I can. It's my understanding that today's a, a special day for you. I mean, we might have heard something about it.
Fill me in because I'm not aware.
Is today, today's your 25th, the anniversary of being with the Union County Sheriff's Office, is it not?
Oh, let me explain that.
Okay. Oh, let me explain that.
It actually got posted today. My 25th year with the county was back in October.
Was it?
But because of the, the COVID restrictions, we didn't have, have not had an award ceremony for the, the last quarter of the year for 20. So, that's why you're, a lot of, everybody's seeing these, these postings with the awards being given out on social media because we're still trying to recognize our folks. But yeah, that was my, my 25th year was in, start, I was in October with the county and this year I'm finishing up my 28th year total, so.
Well, regardless, we saw it today, so we're gonna, we're gonna blame the county and COVID. And say, congratulations and thank you for your service to our county for so long.
Thank you very much.
And I'm sure there's a few others would like to give you a shout out too.
Well, thank you.
Go ahead, Captain. This is, uh, your update.
Okay, the, uh, what I, I think it's included in your agendas as well, but this was a quick little slideshow I was going to give you is the comparison between 2019 and 2020. Next slide, please. This will give you a, kind of the basis for the calls of service between the two years. Now, you'll recognize and I, this not out of the way for me to tell you that the 2000, or 2020 numbers are really skewed. With the changes that, you know, that happened in February, March, when COVID was first, we were hearing a whole lot more about it and we were restricting some of our officers. And as you go through this, I'm going to point some of that out. But in 2019, there was, our total calls for service was 12,705. Well, even with the, you know, the stay-at-home orders happening and the, you know, the schools letting out, our calls for service roughly went up 122 calls to 12,827 between the years. So, we still had that increase. Next slide, please. Our self-initiated events, you're going to see skyrocketing. And this is where I tell you our numbers are skewed because we had a lot of help in Indian Trail. When the schools let out, I was, I dare say averaging probably six to seven cars a shift because the SROs were having, were coming in and helping us cover, cover the town of Indian Trail. I wish those numbers were true and true all the time from year to year because of 2019, there were about 20, 29,966 total self-initiated events, which is usually about par for us from year to year. This year or in 2020 was 42,552. So, and there were some dips in there that were, we were restricting our officers from, you know, a lot of the personal contacts that you, that we made with, with the citizens just simply for their safety and for the citizen's safety. Next slide, please. You can see our Part 1 violent crimes are substantial, well, not substantially, but down about 26%. These are your, your more serious Part 1 crimes, murder rate, robbery, aggravated assault, all showing that negative. Indian Trail reflects a, a very, very low crime rate, especially in the Part 1 crimes compared to sister cities of the same size and same population. Next slide, please. This is property crimes in Part 1 still down as well. I, I want to say that a lot of this is coming from people being, you know, being at home more with those stay-at-home orders where your, your burglaries and your break-ins outside of the, you know, the car break-ins, these, those numbers are all reflected down from 2019 to 2020. The next slide, please. Our, our activity inside Indian Trail, and this is all Indian Trail assigned deputies. Like I said earlier, with COVID, our field contacts went down and personal contacts. Citation slightly went up, but I'm going to tell you that's reflected from our two traffic officers in the grant addition that started in October. Instant reports were down a little bit, but a lot of that was because of incidents being handled by phone. So, there weren't requiring written reports for them and arrests were down too. And a lot of that's just because those field contacts were, were cut down and those contacts made due to safety. All right, next slide, please. Drug arrests as well, reflecting about 50% down, which is our biggest one, which is Schedule C, Schedule V at the bottom, which is more common, but a lot of that's due to that, those field contacts being down as well. Next slide, please. And then the traffic accidents. Between 2009 or 19 and 2020, 533 wrecks handled by the Indian Trail officers. And in 2020, we handled 527. Those are being, that's the number of accidents being actually handled by an Indian Trail deputy. Across the board in, as far as accidents go, in the town of Indian Trail, we're handling just right at 50% as the numbers reflected from last year of the total number of accidents between us and the Highway Patrol. And that's what, that's all I have on the, as far as 2019 to 2020 stats for you. It's a quick overlay just to kind of give you some numbers to look at and to give you an idea about where we're at from one year to the next. Does anybody have any questions about those?
Any questions for Captain?
Nope.
Mayor.
Oh, yes.
Just a real quick comment. As we start to go into the budget season, Captain James and I have been working very well pulling together some additional data pertaining to the activities of the Sheriff's Office. And I think, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Kevin, I think our goal in this is to be able to give you objective analytical data as to the types of services. And if you want to continue these services, this is our best estimate of the resources to do that. One thing I will note in the report, and we certainly appreciate it, is as you start to talk about accidents, the burden of investigating accidents is falling on our deputies more than the Highway Patrol for just a variety of reasons. And the other point I'd like to, the board to take away from that is he mentioned that the Part 1 offenses are down. And one of the aspects of a community, in my personal opinion, it's not, I mean, police officers you have, but how safe do the citizens feel? And so, I commend Captain James and his deputies for keeping a good suppression on Part 1 offenses and traffic offenses. And we want to keep the, the pedal to the metal if I could suggest that.
Thank you, Ms. McLauren. Thank you, Captain.
Well, the only, I've got one other thing, Mr. Mayor, if you'll allow.
Oh, yeah, of course.
It was suggested by Councilman Barber at the last meeting and by you in the conversation that me and you had about the, some of the officer recognition that was going out and pointing some of these officers out that actually working in the trail. Wanted to let you know that we presented service awards to Deputy Cory Howard, Deputy Jody Rutledge and Deputy Mike Gallagher in this past quarter. Deputy Mike Gallagher was also presented with a life-saving award. Deputy Mike Gallagher was also presented with a life-saving award for saving a life while on duty. And then the, the two LEAK graduates, graduates, which is the law enforcement executive program that's hosted by NC State. That's a six-month program where those two sergeants went for a week a month to complete that class. Sergeant Sean Mayhew and Sergeant Garrett Davis successfully graduated that last class in the spring last year. So I'd like to congratulate them.
Very much. We'd like to congratulate them also. And thank you for recognizing them and to keep that up so that we're well informed. If you'd pass along our congratulations to them.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we're up to the consent agenda. I'll need a motion to approve the consent agenda. There's no, if there is no questions.
So moved.
The McIntyre has made the motion to approve the consent agenda. Is present it all in favor? Mr. Ed?
Approve.
Mr. Barber?
Approve.
Mr. Stone? Mr. Morris? I got everybody? Yes. Okay. Consent agenda is approved unanimously. Kathy? Okay, that brings us to public hearing in the Clover Group. Karen, are you with us?
She's there. She's on mute.
Oh, she's on mute for a second.
I am here. I'm sorry, Mayor.
Okay, can you just give us the 30-second overview of how the public hearing works on the virtual meetings?
Yeah, absolutely. So I believe that this was noticed as a public, as a virtual meeting, so citizens were allowed to write in comments and I'm not sure if we are made available live commenting. What happens is we will go through the public hearing, we will close the public hearing, and then citizens are allowed at least an additional 24 hours to present comments to the full council. And then council can take action at the follow, at the next meeting.
That helps. That, that keeps it short and simple. Okay, who's going to be handling this?
Good evening, Mayor. This is Brandy.
Hey, Brandy.
I'm ready to go if you're ready to start.
The floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. So good evening, Mayor and Town Council. Our one public hearing for the evening is conditional rezoning CZ 2020 0098, located just down from the intersection of Old Monroe Road and Chestnut Lane. This request is to rezone approximately six acres from single-family SF1 to conditional zoning multifamily CZ MFR. And the developer for this project is Clover Group. The intent of this request is to rezone the property to permit the construction of 122 senior living apartment units. Here you can see the aerial map with the two subject parcels highlighted in red. Just to the west of the property is Presley Animal Hospital that was constructed in 2018. The existing site displayed here shows a majority of the sites currently cleared with a cluster of trees on Chestnut Lane furniture. And this last photo for you shows a view looking south into the property from Chestnut Lane. The existing zoning designation, as mentioned previously, is single-family SF1. There is a mix of SF1 neighborhood business and multifamily residential surrounding this property. As you can see, the, for variety of shades on the map. And again, just the future land use map here indicates this parcel is within the Old Monroe Village overlay and sets this property out as mixed use, which you see in the dark red. Again, just a quick review. Again, it's two parcels, a total of six acres proposing 122 senior living units. You can also see in the slide the surrounding parcels with the zoning districts and the existing uses displayed with a mix of uses already present in the area. Here is the, the concept plan and landscaping plan for your review. We can refer back to this if needed, if there are specific questions. And so to be perfectly honest with council, the quality and architectural features of this building have come a long way since we first received this submittal. Staff felt the building would be visible from multiple elevations and it was important to have a quality product on display. The surrounding neighbors also requested architectural features continue on the woodland side as it will be visible from their property. And, and as you see, the developer agreed. The east and west elevations here, they also, as you can see, include that brick extending beyond the first four dormers and then other features to add interest. And here's a sample of the garage frontages as well. As consistency findings are as follows. This proposed project is consistent with several of the goals of the comprehensive plan. Land use and housing goal one, by creating a diverse range of housing options as described in the Village Center overlay recommendations. Land use and housing goal number two, by promoting a mix of land uses with, within each village and land use. And housing goal number six, which creates a more predictable land development process that will encourage investment within our community. The applicant will be required to complete all traffic improvements as dictated by the town and NC DRT. Parking for the site totals 135 parking spaces with 40 of those being garage spaces and 13 visitor spaces. Parking needs for senior living versus a market rate, apartments are definitely different. Planning board did ask that visitor spaces were delineated near the entrance and the applicant agreed. And we actually added that as a condition of this approval. The two required community meetings were held and 10 citizens attended at town hall. You see the initial concerns listed here. I would like to share that in all of my career, this project stands out as the best example of surrounding property owners participating in the process, being very reasonable and willing to negotiate. I'd like to thank the surrounding property owners, the development team, Anna Senior Planner, Matt Ward, for all working together to make the project, the best scenario for all involved. Again, in summary, this project does promote the goals of the comprehensive plan. Staff feels it's a reasonable request with the suggested conditions contained within your packet. Planning board at their January 19th meeting voted unanimously to recommend approval of this request. In response to a few concerns by the planning board, the visitor parking was added and the three-bedroom units were removed to avoid any perception of families being able to become a tenant at this location. We will be requesting action on this at the February 23rd Town Council meeting. The development team, Chris Clifton and Matt Rowland with the Clover Group and Chris Isaacs with the Isaacs Group are panelists tonight and able to answer any questions that you may have. And I'll take any questions that you have with me. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Karen, fill me in on the proper procedure again.
Well, first I would invite the developer to, the applicant to speak if they have anything to add to the presentation. And if they, and after they go, then open it up to the public. And if there's any written comments that we've received, we would have those written to the record. If there's any live comments, we would have that organized to have those folks speak and then be able to have council discussion and close the hearing.
Okay. Is the developer have anything that they'd like to add? Brandy?
Thank you, Mayor. This is Chris Clifton. I appreciate the opportunity. I'll be brief. I think Brandy and her staff have done a great job. I want to also thank the council for reaching out to us on some questions. And especially as Brandy said, thank the neighbors because we've come a long way since we started this project about 14 months ago. And I think it's an outstanding project that, that we're going to look forward to owning 25 years from now. With that, I'll kind of leave that and answer any questions you have. I can go into great detail, but I think it's more important that I'm available to answer questions.
Okay, council, do we have any questions for Brandy or Mr. Clifton at this time? On, by the silence, no questions. I'll open the public comments.
Say something there.
What was that?
David Cohen is trying to speak.
Oh, David?
I keep forgetting to take it off mute. I'm sorry. I did have a question. Hey, when you say senior, what age? What's age requirement?
55 plus.
Is this, and I'm just curious. It's, it's, okay, it's apartments and not, so the rentals, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, how does that compare? Is, is it more of a, I see in Matthews, they have a huge 55 and over. They advertise in the newspaper, more like a resort type thing. If you know what I'm talking about.
Yes, sir.
Or they advertise it as more, you know, activities. So this is 55 and over and probably not necessarily a retirement community. Is that correct?
I would say that yes, it is a retirement community in the sense of age. Let me give you a profile of who our average tenant is. It's typically a 70-year-old female that is widowed or has a trailing spouse that either is in memory care or assisted living off-site. So these are independent, age-restricted multifamily units. So I think the differentiation between what you've mentioned over in Matthews, and I raised my kids in Stallings in the 90s, so I know the area pretty well. The price points on what you're talking about in Matthews require sometimes $150,000 upfront investment plus rentals that run between 2,000 and 3,000 a month. That's, that's not our market. We, we serve a niche with an income level of about 75,000 and above, which is close to your per capita income. And, and their average stay is about six or seven years. It's that transition between when the kids have left and you don't need the big house and you can't handle all the maintenance, but you're not ready for assisted living or other functions. And you haven't decided to go to the beach or go to the mountains and you still want to be close to your kids, but you don't want to have to invest at this point in your life and buy another house next door in the next subdivision. It gives your, your seniors an option to stay in your marketplace. And 75% of our residents will come within five miles of this location. Give you a couple little statistics. Within five miles of this location, 65 and older, you have almost 20,000 residents. 10 miles from this location, you almost have 70,065 plus. So I think you can see that the product that you mentioned in Matthews and this product is considerably different.
What is your, what is your rent approximately? And is mainly one and two bedroom?
Yeah, 90% of the 122 units are two-bedroom. One and a half or two baths and the balance of the, the rest of them are one-bedroom. Most of our residents like the two-bedroom because it gives an opportunity to have the grandkids over or have friends and family. And they're staying in the same neighborhood they've been in with the same, same community. So they're going to church and they have their social groups and all other functions and they still want that, that room inside. But I would say our rent, which you have to understand, our rent includes power, cable, all utilities, trash, recycling, onsite security. Runs about, but this property would probably be about 1450 to, to 1575.
Gotcha. Well, thank you. That, that, that sounds reasonable and very, very reasonable for everything that you, you got. Thank you.
Before we move on, make sure that it's written into the record that I opened the public hearing.
Mayor.
I will never get used to these virtual meetings. Who's speaking?
My kid.
Mr. Ed.
I have a couple of questions.
Right ahead.
So are there any other amenities?
Yeah, we've got a whole list of amenities. Brandy, you don't want to pull those up? We can actually show them or I can speak to them. Whatever's more convenient.
Chris, do you want to speak to those? It may take me a minute to get that one.
While we're waiting, security. How, what, what's the process of security? Since you're, it sounds like you are looking at probably, which makes sense, more older females?
Well, I mean, we're going to have a mix, but, and by giving you a description of what we think our average profile, that's across 45 communities throughout the Midwest that we have other facilities. We've been doing nothing but senior living, independent living since 1997. We own everything that we've developed since then and we'll own and operate this facility along with six or seven others in the metro Charlotte area. This is a second of, of our, our projects in Charlotte. We have additional one in the rezoning process in Steel Creek, south of the airport. Amenities, each of our floors have common area space. And as far as security, there's typically a key fob system by which everybody has to come and go into the property with a key fob, so only the residents can come and go. You have to check into a central lobby elevation to, to access the properties and to use the elevator system. All the parking spaces are designated that are rented with the garage units that are enclosed. And, you know, we have onsite monitoring of all of our common area space that are used by our residents council for parties and events and playing cards and bingo and other things of that nature. So, I mean, security is one of our top objectives. Security, safety and the ability to, to be able to use the space. It has a complete full kitchen area. And it would be just like their home, except it's about 1,000 square feet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the council?
Mayor, I do have a full list, but I think Chris covered, unless you want me to read that list out.
Would council, could you email it to everyone so they have a hard copy?
Thank you, Brandy.
Easier with this than just having a slide flip by. Kathy, was there any, or anybody, is there anybody here for public comments?
I have nothing. Brandy, do you have comments? Anybody have public comments?
No, sir, Mayor. I have not received any public comments.
Okay, Karen?
Yes, sir.
Keep pushing me along here on this.
All right, so if there's no comments available right now, you can go ahead and close public comment. And then we will announce that the town council will accept public comment for at least 24 hours after this hearing. And those comments will be written to the record at the next meeting.
Okay.
And to council taking action.
Okay, so, yes, Brandy.
Excuse me, just quickly, I wanted to say that we wanted to be gracious to the public. So we are opening that comment period until February the 26th, that close of business. I'm sorry, favorite, February 22nd, which will be the day before the next council meeting.
Okay, thank you. So we're gonna close public comments and we're gonna accept the public comments till the 22nd, close of business sent to, we have, we'll, we'll post, you'll post where to send them to, correct? To.
Kathy Queen, Town Clerk.
Thank you. And we will, the council will vote on this at the next council meeting on the 23rd and read into record any further public comments. There we go. Did I do that right, Karen?
Excellent job, Mayor.
I'm getting there. All right. Thank you for, all right, we'll move on to the next item. Which, okay. UDO amendment for 160D and staff proposed edits. Correct?
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, hey, okay, you're up, sir.
Thank you. This is Tim Jones, Senior Planner, the Planning Department. Thank you again, Mayor and Council for, for reviewing this. This is the decision for the UDO amendment for the 160D and staff proposed edits. for the one sixty D and staff proposed edits, ZT twenty twenty dash one twenty-one. Next slide, please. Just real quick, it was two parts in the revisions, like I mentioned, for chapter one sixty D, North Carolina statutes. Made some major revisions and consolidations. And staff also included some revisions for some policy changes and some clarification of language. Next slide. So we're back up, this request was consistent with the town's comprehensive plan as the ordinance supports the vision and goals of the plan. So the requested action is for two motions. The motion for the consistency findings, and then a motion on the actual text amendment. So first is the consistency findings to adopt the statement as consistent or not consistent as read into the record at the previous meeting on January twenty-sixth. So, and then the final motion. So I'll turn it back over to council.
I called it David, I was muted. Any questions for Tim?
Good job, thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Tim. Yes, okay, if not, we need two motions.
So if there's no questions, I'll go ahead and make a motion, Mr. Mayor. The motion on consistency findings, to adopt the statement of consistency as consistent as read into the record for ZT two zero two zero dash zero one two one by staff on January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, and again tonight, but.
Just replace that with today's date, February ninth.
February ninth, twenty twenty.
Okay, all right, Mr. McIntyre's made the motion, Mr. Cohen?
Approve.
Mr. Head?
Approve.
Mr. Morris?
Approve.
And Mr. Barber?
Approve.
All right, I'll make the second motion on the text amendment request to approve the rezoning request for ZT two zero two zero dash zero one two one.
McIntyre's made the second motion to approve, Mr. Cohen?
Approve.
Head?
Approve.
Mr. Barber?
Approve.
Mr. Morris?
Approve.
Okay.
Sir, for the record, please clarify also that that is for ordinance two one oh two oh nine dash three four seven. That ZT two oh two oh dash oh one two one is an ordinance?
Yes, ma'am, just as you read it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that moves us on to amended appointment policy for volunteer boards and committee. Mr. McLaurin?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and Board. Two weeks ago, we reviewed the amended appointment policy for volunteer boards and committees. Following that meeting, I heard from one or two of you that had some suggestions, and they were all very reasonable. As a result, we have amended the policy. If you'll look on page ninety-three of your agenda, and it is basically this, that we have added back in, and I'll read the two points. One is under the application process. We have added a statement that says the clerk shall ensure that staff liaisons, chairs, and council members receive all applications for open positions. And the second addition that we did was under appointments, the chair for each board slash committee may make candidate recommendations to fill open positions. Recommendations should be sent to all five council members, the town manager, town clerk, and mayor. And the chair may make more, more than one recommendation per seat. Each recommendation should include a short statement as to why the candidate is being recommended, and recommendations do not guarantee that the candidate will be selected. And reading this document, it says, all five council members, town manager and town clerk, we should add the word mayor into that also. And so if there's no objection, we would ask that you approve the amended policy.
Are there any questions? Okay, if not, we'll need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the revised volunteer board and committee appointment policy to also include adding the mayor as one of the recipients, as previously stated by the manager.
And Mr. McIntyre's made the motion. Mr. Cohen?
Approve.
Mr. Barber?
Approve.
Mr. Head?
Approve.
Mr. Morris?
Approve.
At the record show, pass unanimously. That brings us to the fiscal year twenty-one stormwater maintenance contract approval. Mr. McLamb?
I'm bringing him in, just wait one second. Okay, he should be on his way.
Am I there?
Yeah, the delights go out again, Mike.
All right, I think I'm here now.
You are, Adam, the floor is yours.
Okay, so we're here tonight for the FY twenty-one stormwater maintenance contract approval. So we went out to bid earlier this year. We ended up, we had eight plan holders of record. We ended up with six submitting a bid with a range from roughly sixty-three thousand to almost six hundred thousand. So obviously, we did not choose the almost six hundred thousand dollar bid. We chose the sixty-three thousand dollar one. That is with a qualus, that is the same contractor that is doing the work, or just finished up doing the work right now. So we're here tonight for council to approve the award of the FY twenty-one stormwater maintenance contract.
That's it, Adam?
That's it.
That's it, that's, I would say, the biggest difference in pricing for one single thing that I've seen yet.
It was pretty interesting, they were kind of grouped together between the six bidders. We had two that were pretty close to that sixty-four. We had two that were about a hundred and twenty. And then we had two that were pretty high. So it was just interesting that they kind of grouped themselves together.
I guess they didn't want the job.
But usually, we see that. We see a contractor or two that'll throw out a number, just, hey, if you pick me, you pick me, and I'll make some money doing the work.
Well, if there's no questions for Adam, we'll need a motion.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
And Mr. Morris has made the motion to approve, I'm assuming?
Yeah, I'd like to make the, the motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-one stormwater maintenance contract for fiscal year twenty-one.
So Morris has made the motion to approve. Mr. Barber?
Approve.
Mr. McIntyre?
Approve.
Mr. Head?
Approve.
And Mr. Cohen?
Approve.
Pass unanimously, Adam.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is our Complete Street Project requesting approvals for the following, Mr. Huntsinger. A award contract for staff recommendations. I'll let you, I'll let him go into detail for that.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Yeah, we're, we are ready to start our design, design process as far as this project's concerned. As you may already know, this project was a, started out as a basically a safety slash pedestrian type project for our downtown. And now, it's kind of morphed into a more of a transportation slash traffic project with accommodations, still having pedestrian accommodations to it. But, so, being that it's become a bigger project, we, we decided to go and, and go through a third-party solicitation route. And so we had to go through an RFQ, RFQ process, which is basically a professional solicitation process based on qualifications. It's not based on money whatsoever. It's based on projects, a submittal package based on the qualification of each firm. And so they submit their package, we do a review of that. We have an internal committee that does a ranking process, which basically ranks all the consultants. And once that ranking process is done, we notify everybody and let everybody know who's, was the highly-selected consulting firm. And so that process was done, completed in January nineteen, January nineteen. And now we're ready to move forward with, with their contract. The attorney and I have reviewed the contract. I've also reviewed the cost, and we feel it's acceptable. And so we would like the council mayor to recommend approving RSNH, RSNH Architects, Engineers and Planners Incorporated at a cost of four hundred and ninety-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars. And I'll take any questions.
Anybody have a question? If there's no questions, we need a motion to approve the contract and recommendation.
Make a motion to approve the contract for the completed project.
And award the contract to RSNH?
Yes, and award the contract to RSNH for four hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Mr. Cohen?
Approve.
He said approve.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Barber?
Approve.
And Mr. Head?
Approve.
Thank you, that's unanimous, that moves us to approve.
Now it's unanimous.
Now it's unanimous, okay, now we heard you. Approval for amended Complete Street Project, CPO Ordinance Number Three Forty-eight. Huntsinger?
Yes, well, now that we've got approval for that contract, we have to amend our CIP ordinance. And so, being that we didn't have any design money in that original ordinance, we, all we had was for like survey and stuff like that. So now that we need, need to revise it, we need to add that, amend it, and of course, it's been amended, just reflect the amount that we just, that y'all just approved. And so now we need a motion to approve that ordinance.
Any questions? Not, I'll need a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve amended Complete Street Project, Capital Project Ordinance. So I need to give the number, oh two one oh two oh nine dash three forty.
One's made the approval, made the motion for approval. Mr. Morris?
Approve.
Mr. Barber?
Approve.
Mr. McIntyre?
Approve.
Mr. Head?
Approve.
That one's approved unanimously, Kathy.
Thank you, we have it.
Okay, that moves us to item C, Chestnut Parkway Phase Three Right-of-Way Acquisition Contract. Mr. Huntsinger?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we, we came to y'all last year to get a sense of if y'all really wanted to move forward with the right-of-way acquisition part of the Chestnut Parkway Phase Three. You know, I brought it to y'all's attention that obviously U fifty oh eight, which is the portion that's between our two parkways, was being delayed by the DOT, and, you know, they had cut off basically right-of-way acquisition. They had started, but they cut it off. And so we had gotten to the point where we're ready, and didn't know if y'all wanted to wait. So during that council meeting, y'all gave me the indication, y'all want to go ahead and move forward with this type of contract. So we've reviewed the contract, we're okay with the cost and everything, so we're ready to move forward for forty-nine thousand, five hundred to a consultant firm, professional property services incorporated. And I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Huntsinger? If not, we will need a motion to approve for a professional, what's the name of the company, Todd?
Professional Property Services Incorporated.
What Todd said.
I'd like to make that motion, if you'll allow me.
Yes, please.
To approve the right-of-way acquisition contract for Chestnut Parkway Phase Three to Professional Property Services, Inc., for forty-nine thousand, five hundred. I'd like to make that motion.
Mr. Morris has made the motion, Mr. Cohen?
Approve.
Barber?
Approve.
Head?
Approve.
Mr. McIntyre?
Approve.
That's unanimous.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Brings us to urban archery discussion, Mr. McLaurin.
Urban archery program is a program offered by the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission each year to try to reduce the number of deer in the urban areas. Each year, cities are asked whether they wish to participate. Y'all have participated in a number of years. I think there was one year that you didn't choose to participate, and there were a lot of calls placed to City Hall. On page one hundred and forty-four of your agenda package, we are recommending that you approve urban archery for the season beginning January twenty twenty-two. And we would join the town of Mineral Springs, Stallings, Weddington, Waxaw, who also participate. And also contained in that memo is five or six bullet points, which define the rules and regulations. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? There's no questions, we need a motion to approve the urban archery.
I'll make the motion. You ready?
Go ahead, Mr. Barber.
For the, to approve for the Town of Indian Trail to participate in the urban archery season scheduled for January twenty twenty-two.
Mr. Barber's made the motion to approve, Mr. Cohen?
Approve.
Mr. Morris?
Approve.
Mr. McIntyre?
Approve.
And Mr. Head?
Approve.
Okay, thank you, that's unanimously passed. That brings us to our managers update, Mr. McLaurin.
Several items I'll send to you offline, but just want to remind you of the upcoming meeting with COG, which is kind of a kickoff to our strategic plan slash budget process. We appreciate you interviewing with Geraldine Gardner last week. And just to remind the board that what we'll do is we'll use this to identify our core values as a town government, and from that, we build the priorities, and from that, then we build the budget. So more information will be sent out, sent out as we get closer to those dates. I was also asked to talk about the impact of property tax collection and sales tax. Jim and I stay in constant contact with that. I think as of now with property tax, we have collected almost ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent. So our ladies down there are working really hard, and our sales tax has actually gone up. So we've been very blessed. The last item I want to report, it was acknowledged earlier tonight. This is Black History Month, and a shout-out to Carrie Warner and the Social Committee. Every Monday in February, we're sending out via email to all the employees an item we call Monday Moments, which recognizes African-American history. We did the first one this past Monday. We did a video on the history of the Juneteenth holiday. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, that brings us to Karen for council comments.
Mr. McIntyre?
You're muted, Marcus.
Yeah, I know, I was trying to speak, so, so I'm ready now, ready?
You prepared?
I am prepared.
Break a leg.
All right, so a couple of things just want to know. Want to thank Commissioner Helms and Mr. Matthews, Assistant County Manager, for coming in today just to kind of update us on the water, sewer, within the town and the county. That's always appreciated. Want to shout out Captain Jimson and his staff. Like what I'm hearing in terms of the numbers where they're going, COVID may have an effect on some of these numbers, but it's good to kind of know we're headed in the right direction. Captain Jim, so want to mention to you about the sign that you have out there on Union, the Indian Trail Road, that gave me a chuckle this morning when I saw it, so I really appreciate that. To Mr. Jones, Tim Jones, Senior Planner, and Brandy and staff, I want to say good work on the UDO. I know that's part of a two-step process, but, you know, that was something that was mandated. Some of the changes were mandated by the state, but as we're growing as a town, you guys really put a lot of work and effort into that. So hopefully, that will give, anybody wanting to build something within the town, they have sort of a roadmap, understanding the do's and don'ts, so that... understanding the do's and don'ts, so, that's pretty good. Looking forward to the second part of that. And last but not least, I want to say thank you to Kathy Queen and Abby Ball, the two of you, in terms of the information we're receiving for the meetings, the format, the documents, I want to say, "That's flawless, I can follow very easily," and I really appreciate all the information, I don't have to shuffle around looking for anything, so, thank you very much for that. And everybody have a safe and pleasant evening, thank you.
Mr. Morse?
Thank you. I'd like to echo Marcus's sentiments with Brian Matthews, Richard Helms, Warren Cooksey, coming before Council on the presentations tonight, as well as our own staff, Hayden, Todd, Adam, Brandy, Tim, and especially Abby for putting this Zoom meeting on, thank you so much. As we, as we heard tonight about our water and waste treatment woes, and how it may impact the future of Indian Trail, I'm sure this Council will give it serious consideration as these different additional rezonings are coming before us, which will be taxing the system, and we need to bear that in mind. I'm looking forward to the March 11th meeting down there at Union County, I think last year's was very good, I did not get to attend, but I was in attendance online for those two days, and did get to finally join, join my peers. And I hope you all have a great week, and look forward to seeing you back here on the 23rd. Good night.
Mr. Barber?
Thank you. First off, I'd like to remind everyone that, in the area, that the Indian Trail Lions Club is still helping people in need get eyeglasses and exams, if you need it. Feel free to reach out to me if you know someone, or you want, want to have someone from the club contact you. I did pick up my U D O draft, and I do want to give a shout-out to Brandy Dees, Tim Jones, and the whole department, that's an impressive document, and that's got nothing to do with that great Wolfpack red jacket Ms. Dees is wearing tonight, so, looking good. The, but also, I wanted to let everybody know that the Union County Sheriff's Office is doing a car seat check at Poplum Elementary School on February 16th. They also will check the parents' seats in the after-school pickup line. Shout-out to Captain James and his officers for their awards and service that they're doing, and awards they're getting. Shout-out to Lex and Aaron, the New Eagle Scouts at our Boy Scout Troop 276 here in Indian Trail, the leaders Rick Forterson and the other people over there are just doing a great job. Like, Abby and the staff did a good job on the newsletter, Kathy Queen, McLaurin, appreciate everybody putting together this meeting, and again, really appreciate Commissioner Helms and Mr. Matthews coming in and updating us. Other than that, everybody have a blessed evening, thank you.
Mayor Alvarez?
Hey, they pretty much covered most of everything, I just want to touch on a couple of quick things. One, all the, the increased complaints been getting about trash along the side of the roads, just is getting worse and compounding day after day, to the point where you've got giant pieces of wood and bricks in the middle of some of the roads, that's going to cause an accident. I know Mr. McLaurin and staff are working on programs to get these, this trash picked up, we've had a lot of people in town reach out that want to volunteer and start a roadside pickup of trash, and I spoke to Mr. McLaurin about that, and that's something that he's definitely said he would look into and try and make that happen for volunteers. See, we have a good town. Just a little shout-out for Union County Nutrition. As some of you know, my son and I, we bring meals to, for, it's a partnership between the county Nutrition Services and Meals on Wheels to senior citizens on Tuesdays. The county's in need of people to do this, they do this every day of the week, and they're running short for several routes, so, please, if you want, if you have time, any day during the week, reach out to the county, they can use the help. And again, everyone, COVID's no joke, it's, it's, it's not a political made-up story, it's the vaccines, I, I've gotten a vaccine, and trust me, I don't have any sudden urges to go out and buy Microsoft products. Please, get your vaccine, take the proper precautions, every little thing we do will move us towards the finish line that much sooner. The more we argue, the more we stay divided on this, the more we believe the memes and everything else that's out there, the longer it's going to take, and the more lives we are going to lose. The lives we're losing now are starting to affect our youth, our high school, our elementary school kids, and it's, 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 it's going to get worse if we don't watch very carefully what we're doing, sorry about that. So, please, get your vaccines when it's your turn, take your precautions, and that's all I have to give, everyone. Shout-out to everyone. And one of my school board members today said something really, really good, and let's just remember, the whole world needs a hug right now. So, let's just send out a big hug to everyone. It's some tough times, and we're moving towards the finish line very slowly. Thank you, everyone have a great night, God bless.
Mr. Head?
I don't know that I can add much to this, just a big shout-out to Captain James for his 25 years of service, thanks to all the staff and Council, and I don't have to tell Council to drive home safely, so, if I have a good evening, thank you.
There's no closed session, correct?
No closed session.
Nothing to joke about, nothing to joke about at night, so, I'll need a motion to adjourn.
I didn't have anything to say anyway, but.
Oh, Mr. Cone.
Ditto is what everybody said.
Sorry, David.
All right, so, I thought you called my name, but I wasn't sure, so.
I did.
You did.
I thought you did, but anyway, ditto's to everybody, what they said tonight, you know, thank everybody for everything, and I'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Did I forget anybody? Thank you. All right, now, I need a motion adjourn, Mr. Cone?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Head?
Approve.
Mr. McIntyre?
Approve.
Mr. Barber?
Approve.
Mr. Morse?
Already gone.
All right, everyone have a good night.
Thank you, everybody, great meeting, folks, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Bye.